It is seven o'clock. It is really nice to see everybody here. March twenty fifth. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to one nation under God.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, I have no additions or corrections. Motion to approve the agenda presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Approval of the consent agenda. I am going to pass out the So our approval, our consent agenda consists of the meeting minutes from our February meeting minutes, March eleventh session minutes, and payment of our invoices. This is the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Report. Are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to educational highlights, Mr. Markel is going to present our Miss Edwardsburg twenty twenty four.
Good evening. It's my privilege to introduce Ms. Edwardsburg and our Mr. Edwardsburg representative, as well as our Miss Teen Edwardsburg. So our first representative, I'm going to introduce you tonight, is our Miss Teen Edwardsburg, Alyssa Horton. Alyssa, if you want to come on up here. Alyssa is a sophomore at Edwardsburg High School. She's involved in choir, SAD, and also helps out with the food drive. Our representative to Blossom Time on behalf of the Mr. Edwardsburg is Mr. Markwell. Mark is involved in track and cross-country and also does a lot of officiating. Mark is a senior at Edwardsburg High School. Our second runner-up for Mrs. Edwardsburg is Jocelyn Christner. Jocelyn is a junior. She attends the Elkhart Area Career Center and runs track and field for the Yetis. Jocelyn Christner, second runner-up. Our first runner-up for Miss Edwardsburg is Mariska Harbin. Mariska has been awarded perfect attendance at the high school. She's involved in educational talent search, SAD, and student council, and she is a senior at the high school. Mariska Harbin. And at the pageant, they do a big drumroll at this time, but we're going to introduce you to Miss Edwardsburg. Our queen is Miss Kara Halfman. Kara is a senior at the high school. National Honor Society Student Council. She's also president of our SAD and did an excellent job this past year organizing some events for SAD. So Miss Kara Halfman, Miss Edwardsburg.
Congratulations, everyone. I don't know how much time and effort it takes for you guys to do what you do, and it's impressive.
It was a pleasure to come and actually watch some of the pageant occur, so you all did wonderful job.
Moving on to our district assessment update, and Miss Keri Maguire.
It's a hard group to follow. I'm not dressed as well. I'm not as sparkly as they are.
I was just sharing with you some of our already updates from the fall to the winter assessment period that we have. I chose to start with this one in particular because this is the middle school one, and as you can see, we're making growth here. This is math. It's kind of hard to see. If you look, you can see the green bar at the top moving forward. This is the fall assessment. This is the winter assessment. Middle school's always kind of what you got to take with a little grain of salt because eighth graders that test out and they're at much higher levels don't get a assessment. Our numbers of green are actually much higher than that, but they don't test in eighth grade level. So this would be math for middle school.
This would be, uh-oh, hang on.
Reading for the middle school. Again, same thing. Bottom line being the fall assessment. Upper line being the winter assessment. Again, we have eighth graders that don't test here because they have tested out. Little different story when we go to the intermediate, intermediate reading. Everybody talks. You can see the bottom line fall. You see the big growth that they're making there in the winter assessment, right on track for where they need to be for the end of the year. This is typical of what we normally see this time of year, and I intermediate math scores, same thing. Is, we are. We were at thirty-three percent, and now we're at fifty-six percent of on-grade level in our club already for the school year, so that's great. Eagle Lake reading, same thing. Went from thirty-four percent to fifty-seven percent. Eagle Lake math. Going lower, but much gain, right? Reading at the primary. This is both K and one. And math at the primary. So you can see it's tough, right? They come in at thirteen percent, and they've already typical when I left back, right on track. Math is just a couple points behind still, but that's okay. We're still working on that. The next report, I went back to find, this shows you where the schools fall with the right? You want them in this quadrant, not here. I went back to tell you which schools that were, but I can't find the male found this report for me. But I will tell you. But they're all in the high-performance, high-growth category, so that's great. This one was for reading. And this So we have a little work to do, right? We still want to be here, but we're close. So that's just kind of a quick update on where we're at, what data we're kind of looking at. We break it down even farther. We break it down into grade levels. We break it down into individual students. We start grouping students. We start targeting students through our MTSS process, our multiple systems of support process, and looking to see, okay, where do we need the extra support, and where can we give it? How are we going to do it? The schools, they're doing a lot of work with that. Many of the elementaries meet at least once a week, sometimes full day. The first one they take in September, early, early October, September. The second one they take and then the last one they'll take around May. This is, I always like to look at this and go, okay, we have work to do. We have work to do, and then when May comes up, and we look at it, yes, look at the work we did. Any questions?
That was just a real quick overview for you. You're able to work there.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Get ready for you.
Moving on to the ALC presentation, Mr. Great.
Good evening. Well, I'm getting set up here. I've been told by multiple people that I should take about seven minutes tonight for my presentation. Because I'm so, that is all-winded. But I'm going to tell you something right now. I'm going to be, I'm going to have a lot of pride in what we're doing tonight because of the Alternative Learning Center, because this is my last presentation, so make sure I highlight some things that we're doing tonight here for the Alternative Learning Center, and I really appreciate the honor of being here tonight.
You did say ten, not seven, ten minutes.
Right. Cheryl talked to me about this beforehand. She told me that I should take thirty minutes tonight, and I told her, I said, I said, look, I can't do that tonight. I can't.
Amazing thing, Steve.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, so tonight, I want to talk about the Alternative Learning Center, and I need to put this up here first, just to kind of for five years, don't mind me, I'm not going to stand behind and forward, but like, for five years, I tried to stop saying all dead. Because we are not the all dead. We are a culture of an assenter that be successful. We have supported seventy-two students so far this week. We have supported in-person students, and we've had our highest amount of virtual students in our career that we've ever had. This is the most we've ever had in our program this year. So I want to talk about a little bit about us and the Alternative Learning Center first. First of all, we are a center that supports the online learning of ninth and twelfth grade students, all behind in credits due to a number of reasons: attendance, behavior, mental health, physical health, or other extenuating circumstances. We get support from the high school in place of students at the Alternative Learning Center, but we also place students, which I'm going to talk about tonight, for extenuating circumstances. We can't work in our school, but have to work okay. Students can work online through a program called Edge Unity, which is our online learning program, either in-person at the ALC or virtually in their home environment. Tonight, what I'm going to last, we're going to focus on a specific program in our center. The Alternative Learning Center Virtual Learning Program. Three of our virtual students will start here this evening, so I want to introduce them. I have Christian Peterson, his parents. Thank you for being here tonight.
I have
My girl, and her parents. So thank you. Allison Lee, Allison's sitting over there. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. I'm not going to speak to start about the virtual learning program. I think you need to hear, or let them tell you about the virtual learning program. So I'm going to start out, and I asked him some specific questions. I asked him, why did you transition to the ALC? What has helped you be successful in our virtual program, and why should this program continue? So I'm going to start by welcoming Christian Peterson up to the podium tonight. He's going to be able to
When I came to the ALC, I struggled to keep up in school. I was failing all my courses. I decided to transition to the ALC Virtual Learning Program because I was having health issues that we were affecting attending school on a regular basis. I became a virtual learner. I learned to get my time and work at my own pace. This helped me not feel stressed, to hurry and get my work done. I also got the chance to regulate my sleep due to my health issues and work on my own time. This program has helped me a lot, and now I am on track to graduate after this virtual learning program should continue to be offered at the ALC because it has allowed me more time to work on my coursework and earn my I'm not failing courses anymore, and now I'm considered an overall student.
Thank you.
Yeah, Alyssa, I'd like to introduce Paul Sweet.
When I transferred to the ALC, the most important reason I transferred is that the ALC was able to adjust and customize the courses for me, helping me understand the content better. And then I was able to work at my own pace and study in ways that worked best for me. I had to move to virtual learning because of a transportation issue, living outside a district. Working virtually has taught me a lot of important lessons. It has taught me how to prioritize school and to adjust my time in an orderly fashion. The main reason I am successful in this program is because I am able to work at my own pace, and if I'm having trouble, I can go back to a certain assignment and work through it until I fully understand the content. Now I am working hard in the hope that I return to AHS for my senior year. This program has helped me to get back on track to graduate. And the virtual, virtual learning programs should continue because working virtually teaches us to be responsible, learning to set up a schedule, and everything done.
I came to the Alternative Learning Center my freshman year, and it was the best choice I made. I was a young mom of a newborn baby. I had to learn the fit in schooling and as I care my son. The flexible schedule of the ALC allowed me to be home with him and do my schoolwork around his needs. Without the ALC Virtual Learning Program, I would not be graduating this school year, besides earning a diploma for graduating. I'm graduating with good grades, and I am proud of that. Due to these good grades, I've been on the honor. Mr. C has encouraged and supported me these last four years, and I appreciate that. I have met goals that were almost impossible just by being a student in this program. This program benefits students like me that would normally struggle going to a regular high school. I have been successful in this program.
Thank you. And I'm going to tell you, every one of my students have a story. They have a story. There's specific reasons that they're working from home. What I do is I support tonight. I'm going to tell you what the program has caused to do. First of all, I worry more than I ever have about my students staying on track. Here I am, I'm treating my students' progress. As I you know, I'm really trying to that's what it's all about. Losing more hair because you know, I keep pulling it out. You know, yeah, I just keep pushing them, and that's all you can do. You use, I've used more technology, especially my phone. I got a story. I'm really getting to know our new superintendent, your husband. I'm sitting there at the dinner table. I'm on my phone. And probably when they're my wife and I, I'm on my phone doing I'm on my phone because I'm actually texting and communicating with students right at my phone all the time. We all wake up all the way up at nine o'clock at night, but that's when I getting okay, and I can't talk to them anymore after that, but I always am trying to talk to students. It's a crucial part of our program. We have to keep communicating, supporting. I have to keep supporting. Sometimes have to do what I I basically nag, push, doesn't let up on students. And just sum this all up. I wouldn't have it any other way, because that's what you have to do to be successful. You have to monitor progress. You have to support them. You have to care about them. You're going to get them to the finish line working together. I have to keep communicating with the parents, too. They sick in my emails, too, because I sit there and I'm telling them, well, if their student's falling behind, I got to make sure they're staying on track. That's what it's all about. So what do we do to monitor ALC virtual learning students? I want to kind of just show you some documents tonight. First, each student has a personalized learning plan. Every student for them where they have to finish specific courses each month. Here's an example of a student's personalized learning plan we have up here. When virtual learning was in the past, students do multiple courses at one time, sometimes five, six, seven courses at one time. It doesn't work. It's too overwhelming for them, okay? We have to do this type of learning for them to do one or two courses they focus on, so there's set specific progress goals. We keep track, if you look up here, we keep track of how many times they need their progress. This is an example, continually making their progress goals, and is currently on track to finish and graduate this year. Up the most left because they graduate, okay? That's what we do. This is just a plan that we set forth based on what they need to complete to graduate. Besides the personalized learning plan, they have to meet weekly progress. I keep a chart on virtual learning plans, students and in-person students, where we basically take a look, we have specific courses that are set, and we set progress goals for them to complete and achieve. If you're seeing green up here right now, these are virtual learning students who are making their progress goals each week. That's huge. When we get them That's huge when we get them there because we keep them on track to finish their courses. I basically use my background in math, being a math teacher, and I keep track of this throughout. As you can see, virtually, you have your ups and downs. We have some students that I can show them. That. All the time, help start falling behind, but all of a sudden, they know what they got to get done, and they crank it in at the end, and they finish their courses. We'll have this up and down progress where you will see right here, for example, the number of students that we measure. And you'll see that we do have sixty-five. We have up and down where we can get like seventy or high sixty percent of them meeting their progress goals. Look at the end where we get a hundred percent because we push them to get there. It's their own pace, it's extending what they have at home. If you just don't give up on it, we keep pushing them to get there. Okay? Meeting weekly progress goals help them meet their course completion goals. So we check to see whether how many times. How many courses they have completed. We have a whole program set up. Everything in green is the virtual. They met, they met their course completion goal by specific deadline. We have right now, this is probably our uniform head school, we had four students that didn't meet. But we're going to push it. But we get every month between in-person students and our virtual learning plan students. We get over ninety percent of our students meet their course completion goals each month. And that's huge for our program because we're keeping them on track to graduate. Since we have been our own school, what have we accomplished with our virtual students? And I just want to show you. Since we became an own school in two thousand twenty-one. This is how we have. And we're not on condition to. Well, like, we started in two thousand twenty-one, we had thirty-seven. We had thirty-three of them meet their credit goal for the year. It's just their credits they needed to complete to stay on track to graduate. We had fifteen virtual students graduate. We had eighty-nine percent of them meet their credit goal. All the way to twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, we had eighty-nine percent, and then last year we had our highest, which was ninety-three percent. That was a huge contributor to our eighty-nine percent graduation rate we had last year at the Alternative Learning Center. Which I'm going to be honest, in my college moment and my time that I've had there. Because to get that amount of students graduating is huge for our program. And to get that graduation rate, the virtual learning students did their job. This year, based on what we're at right now, this probably changes since I last. Thirty-seven right now. They're on track to meet their credit goal. This is how many students we're trying to get to graduate. It's our highest amount this year. We're trying to get twenty-four virtual students to graduate. My fingers crossed, I'm probably going to lose more hair, I'm probably going to push and nag. Okay, and that's what we have to do. We have to keep monitoring their progress and continually. But tonight, I want to recommend what the future of this program should be in regards to virtual. I talked about two-way communication being a key component. The daily emails, the phone calls that I've had to make. Those specific things is a key component of the program. But I think it could take another level in the future. And we start doing Google meetings. Where you get that face-to-face interaction. It's really tough to do that as an Alternative Learning Center instructor leader, when you're helping in-person students. We have multiple responsibilities we have to do throughout the day. I can't do this. But if, but if you do this right here, you have Google meetings, you get to discuss the learning program. Which is key for two-way communication. Home visits. Love to be able to go to the homes if I can, help with students falling behind, talk to the parents about it, get that interaction, that communication. That's just another part of the future of a virtual program to be successful. Setting up appointments with students for tutoring support. Our students' virtual learning is like pulling tooth and nail to tell, for them to tell me if they're really struggling in a course. It's just, it's not their nature. The same way when they were in the classroom. They wouldn't tell their teachers when they're in the classroom when they're struggling. They didn't want to do that. Okay, but now what I can do is try and set up appointments to help them support and make sure we can do that in the future. Okay, whoever does this, because this is what I recommend. I recommend that, looking at this program, that we have a virtual mentor. Someone that is specifically designed to help these students be successful virtually. The Alternative Learning Center Instruction Leader has the opportunity to look over the entire program. That was my role, looking over the virtual learners, the in-person learners, and everything else. This is just one part that could be added in the future to help the program be more successful, to do these specific things. Have a virtual mentor that can support them. Now, taking another level after that, this is where the setter comes in for the Alternative Learning Center. Besides doing a virtual mentor, leading through the virtual. Do to support students, support people that couldn't get their diploma. Have an adult education virtual program where we can get adults to come back that couldn't get their diploma. And it can work online, virtually, to get them to the finish line when they couldn't get there before. There's where now it becomes the full center. Because you've got in-person students, you've got the virtual learning students, and you've got the adults. And this program could take another level at this point. These are recommendations I suggest for the future of this program in my five years of experience. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I want to say thank you to the Board of Education. It's been an honor and a privilege to be here for five years. I'm looking forward to finishing with these students this year, and I just wanted to say thank you. Um, I can't, I, this has been my best position that I've ever had in this district, just for the opportunity of supporting these students. So thank you very much for talking. I really appreciate it.
You definitely left some big shoes to fill, Mr. Fullman.
Thank you.
Um, I will give students an opportunity to go home.
Thank you.
In here.
Yes, thank you. You guys did phenomenal.
Hard to get up in front of a group and do this to this.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Moving on to the general fund amendment, I'm going to.
Thank you. I don't have a presentation today on the board. I did talk about our first budget amendment for the twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, as you recall, when we did our first budget. End of June, I had no clue where we were going. Um, we did have a estimate on what our foundation would be and how many students we would have. Once the governor approved her budget and. Moved forward, we were able to come up with some funding sources here and there. Actually, as of today, we're still hearing about new things that are out there. That are going to come available. And we just approved a grant last. So it's still trickling in slowly and but surely. I put in your packet, a little graph, which. That we did receive and how. It started in twenty-twenty-one with the COVID pandemic, and then. A little bit more in twenty-one, twenty-two, and then, of course, it started going down. Next year, we're only looking for federal funds to be our title fund. Pre-pandemic stage. On the actual budget amendment page that you have. Some of the higher, the larger variances, I'm not going to go through each line. For the state sources, you see, we got a little bit of an upgrade. The governor's budget being finally finalized. There was some extra money in. In there for transportation grants and some education program grants. It's money there that we weren't aware of when we did the first. The big expense is in maintenance. And this, um. When our first budget has been had so many unknowns. Income-wise. We worked at increasing a lot of things, and one of the big things that we did not put in this budget that. We're really paying for now is the asphalt research. So that is a large chunk. Um, some, we also put summary period pack. Um, high school, middle school wanted some factors, and in the first budget, we were able to put those in with this budget and still keep with. Uh, twenty percent of the balance that you guys. Want to, want to kind of try to stay at as long as we possibly can. We also got, um, some new HVAC controls for the middle school. Desperate need of climate control in there, it's way too hot, way too cold. We're still having issues. We're looking, going to be. But hopefully it won't be to the extent as those were. And then some, I was hoping new playgrounds for intermediate. Working at a price like that, money. Where the government come up with, so we might be getting some new equipment there. So, um, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know if there's something I can't answer here.
On the amendment, you've got, um, for athletics, nine hundred fourteen thousand difference, but it looks like.
Right.
So it looks like the difference is only minimal, right?
Right, yep. Yeah, that line, the math didn't cross over that one and the one below it too. So that's seven twenty, it's not the difference. Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Gail about the? Is there a motion to approve the? The budget of? Oh, okay.
I have to do the reading of the.
Okay.
Edersford Public Schools General Fund Budget Amendment, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Schools General Fund for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four is amended as follows. It resolves that the general operation for the Edersford Public Schools. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four amended as follows. Total revenue, thirty-one million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-three. Full expenses, thirty-one million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven. Ending fund balance at six million, eight hundred and four, uh, eight hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty. An increase over the original July one budget of five hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four. This resolution shall take effect at the end of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know if we were doing a roll call.
And we are going to do. Are there any questions or comments about the resolution presented? Hearing them, it'll be a roll call vote. Tammy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah, and Tony.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the auditor bid.
Thank you again. I, um. We came to the end of our audit period with. Our audit with twelve and, and different audit firm this year. So in January, I wrote up an R P. Put it on our state website where all of our requests for proposals get posted for all districts in Michigan. We were able to get bids from four different companies. Um, in discussion, Courtney and I, we went through all of the bids. Um, if anybody would like to see the actual packet, I live in my office, if you want to stop by and look at them. Courtney and I decided to call back the two larger firms and have a virtual meeting with our finance committee. So in that meeting, we got to speak to the principals and the actual auditor. After that meeting, we had a little, after the virtual presentation. We had some discussion and, um. I was asked which one I would prefer to request. I think after meeting both of them. Um, I think Raymond would be a little bit more personable. They also said that they would be a little bit more willing to work on our timelines. Most auditors want to start in late May and June, which is also budget time. Um, that was a little bit hard last year, working with those auditors. Um, because they also wanted to start, and they, and Raymond just seemed a little bit more, um, willing to work around. Some of the issues that we would have in that May-June area. Also, they would be out for the preliminary, um, audit, and then, um, the week. The audit that they're actually on site, maybe would be here that whole week, whereas the other ones weren't really. Um, I didn't get the feeling that they were interested in being here on site for them. And, um. The actual week when they usually did it, I think was going to be a little bit short. So anyway, I recommend we go with Raymond. They are a little bit. Personal, and we get a little bit about our personal service.
And I helped with, um, background checking too, so I was able to reach out to the superintendent. I knew work with them, and we were given very good reviews and reports. Particular superintendent worked with the auditor that would be our principal. The principal auditor also had shared with the finance committee. That had experience as a board member, as a business official, so that very experience. To a good field for understanding what our district was looking for.
The finance committee have anything they'd like to add to that?
No, I think that's pretty much better. I think that his experience was very.
Would be a dynamic contract to, a three-year contract for the audit services starting. Is there a motion to? Sign that? All right, this will also be a roll call vote. Are there any questions or discussion? Tony? Becky?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Natalie? Nice one. Yes, Justin?
Yes.
Tammy? Very much. Moving on to the approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So some background on this item. Last year, the state was able to provide us with what the foundation allowance was going to be. And set our tuition rates. That doesn't look like that's necessarily going to be likely right now in the near future. And we wanted to be cognizant of those families who currently have, um, students that are tuition-based students so that they could plan and make their decisions for next year. So, um, my recommendation to the board is that for next year, for the students who are currently enrolled with us as tuition-based students. That that tuition remain at the ninety-six oh eight that was this year. Um, just since we don't know when the new, uh. Foundation allowance amounts will be out, I want them to be able to plan to make that decision. Then for any new, who are applying as tuition-based students, they would follow whatever the new, um, foundation allowance rate would be for this coming year. Uh, so that's what I am recommending. Um, and then we've tried to simplify the language to make it the least amount of confusing as we possibly can. In regards to the different tuition rates down below.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state tuition for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented? Support. Any questions? Will also be a roll call vote. Tammy?
Yes.
Justin? Yes, Natalie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Becky?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to the curriculum proposals, Mrs. Corey McWire.
Well, I get the exciting part of talking about, uh, curriculum subcommittee that we had the other night. I could speak to it for three hours, and I was given the time limit too, so I won't do that. But we will just kind of touch on some of the highlights in there. Um, I'll get away, get through the technical stuff first, and then we'll get to the exciting stuff, okay? On March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Edersford Public Schools Curriculum Subcommittee, represented by Mrs. Natalie Frants, Mr. On March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, the Edersford Public Schools Curriculum Subcommittee represented by Mrs. Natalie Frants, Mr. Kevin Harris, Mrs. Chelsea Wilson, and Dr. Suits were presented with a proposal by the High School Science and Business CTE Department and the Middle School Computer Science and Middle School Language Arts Department. Their curricular departments were represented by the K-12 Professional Council consisting of departmental teaching staff members and administrators. The proposals were reviewed as presented. I want to take a moment real quick and recognize all the teachers and the, and the administrators that have put tons of hours pouring in over the data and over the curriculum and over what other districts are doing and the budgetary pieces and things like that. Because it's a lot of work to come forward with an actual proposal. And the result of that is, um, they all brought forth some exciting programming to enhance the educational experiences here. So when we're looking at that, we are looking at rationale for change. Why are we doing what we're doing, right? What, is there anything better than what? Review of literature and curriculum models, research in the field of to determine best practice, statement of philosophies, sequential course design and course descriptions, recommendation for instructional materials, technology as it relates to the curriculum, district curriculum guide aligned with Michigan frameworks, evaluation processes and budgeting. Parameters for making the decision include identifying and requesting instructional practices and materials that meet with state standards for each curricular area that will enhance student learning. Identify and request instructional practices and materials that meet financial bounds of the district. Identify and request instructional practices and materials that EPS staff fully embrace and have the ability to impart to the students. Identify and request instructional practices and materials that integrate the use of electronic materials where appropriate for use with our one-to-one technology. So with that, the first presentation that we had was from the Science Department, um, from the high school. And representing them was Mr. Ryan Merkel, Ms. Carrie Bidwell, Ms. Chloe Haggert, Mr. Peter Hoffman, and Dr. Buck Roy. In looking at science, we haven't looked at science in a very long time. So not only is our curriculum out of date, but our instruments are out of date, our supplies are out of date. And what can we do to make this better and more enhancing for our students, right? So I always look back at that big door back in the room because we filled that door up with hopes for dreams and wishes for dreams. What would we want for our students, right? We also surveyed our student body. What would you guys like to see? What's going well? What do we need to change? What would better prepare you for secondary experiences beyond us? So in that, a couple of highlights that came out of that. When we look at, um, programming, there's a lot of programming that's going to stay as it should with updated materials. But there's also some changes that are going to happen. We are requesting that chemistry, conceptual chemistry and chemistry one to the tenth grade year where it recently used to be in junior year. Consequently, we'll move physics. I'm sorry, I said that differently, I said that wrong. We'll move physics to the eleventh grade year. Am I saying that correctly, Ryan? Yeah. We're moving physics to the eleventh year and we're moving chemistry to the tenth grade year, I'm sorry. The reason for doing that is it matches up with our math curriculum. Our math curriculum, but algebra, geometry and algebra two matches up better sequentially with the math skills that are needed in our science classes. That's the reason for doing that. We also would like to add an environmental science class. Looking at M step four shows that we don't do enough with earth science, right? So where can we get that in? Environmental science is a new course that we think students are excited about and that we can help provide some of those learnings. Um, modifying bio two to be anatomy and physiology, continuing to have AP biology, but adding AP chemistry in replace with M two and adding AP physics in replace of M physics two. So again, I'd like to thank the High School Science Committee for that. They worked very, very hard, lots and lots of hours, lots and lots of digging into the data, coming up with the best plan for students that we could have. Next, we heard from the High School Business CTE Curriculum Team. Oh, before I talk about that, let's go back to science for just a minute. The cost of updating the science for textbook curriculums and materials would be two hundred and forty-six thousand is what we're estimating. With the Business CTE Curriculum Proposal, super exciting stuff happening here too. If you've ever heard this, we talked about our, um, business technology management program. It's been, it's been a great program for many years, but it's time to evolve. It's, it's outgrown itself. And so the committee came together, perfect timing in that we also had a, um, uh, audit from the CTE who said, you're doing some of the great stuff, but you're not, you're not doing all of it. So what can we do to make that better? So we are, we are recommending that, um, we move from the offerings forward a little bit. The kids can take them their sophomore year as well. And the reason they can do that is it will open up opportunities for them in their junior and senior years if they get into any of these courses and realize, wow, I really like accounting, I would love to continue in this. And we have the option for them to take accounting too. Wow, I really like learning about business and small business management. They have the opportunity to do more classes than that too. It also offers more of the CTE pathway for them. So we're super excited about that. Adding, we've had digital design, small business management, we'll be making tweaks. Computer accounting, we've had computer accounting too will be. Budget that, we need some textbooks that need to be updated for them and we need some, um, online accounting textbooks that we renew every year anyways, so that the cost of that, we're estimating we should be five hundred and thirty-five. Our next proposal came from the middle school and, um, in computer education. At the middle school level, they currently been doing a full semester of both Microsoft and Google Sheets, which at the time of creation was the, the right thing to do because students were still learning that. However, now students are coming to middle school, they already know how to do a lot of the Microsoft things. They already know how to do a lot of the Google Sheets. So we are recommending to move forward to a true computer science curriculum. Um, we're hoping that it will impact our students and their participation with computer technology and computer science programming and be able to encourage them to take in the courses into the high school as well. Budgeting for this change is minimal, thanks to the Barry and Risa helping to provide curriculum resources and supplies. I don't know if you know this, but Mr. Gordon and I have worked a lot with Barry and Risa this last year and was able to attend some professional development with them. And they have plenty of resources available for us. I plan to ask to set aside ten grand for them. Some of the things that they like, you would like to use is drones for coding, right? We look a lot about being able to use drones in the science world and the agriculture involved in the technology there. Um, being able to code spheres and things like that. So we'll set aside some of that, but there's also limited supplies at the Risa that we can get in for them as well. Uh, last but not least, middle school came to us once again. This really falls in line with the language arts department that's already happening at the high school. Um, we have honors programming already up there. If you remember a few years ago, if you were here, we moved forward with the honors programming and leaning into the advanced placement courses in ELA. Um, we are asking to open up an honors course for eighth at the middle school to prepare them for the honors courses in nine, ten, and eleven. That way, um, it's something that the high school and the middle school have been collaborating on and things that they would like to see happening at the lower grades to prepare the schools. They will still do, still do the eighth grade curriculum, the ELA curriculum, it will be beefed up. It will be moving up at a more accelerated pass. So they will be asking for some additional novel sets and additional curriculum, but they're estimating the cost for that will be under a thousand. Want to open it up to the committee, if you guys have any comments from?
I would like to recognize some of the work that you guys have really done to answer curriculum while still keeping a budget in mind. There was, I believe, a grant that upgraded computer labs at the high school to get ready for a curriculum there, which was really nice to see. Um, as well as utilizing the Barry and Risa. You touched briefly, but that they basically have some sets of things like drones or spheres that different schools can borrow so that we don't have to incur the cost of that, but we still get to have some of that access to technology. And I think the plan is that there's a high need and it's a really successful program. And then we can, you know, invest some of that ourselves that gives them some time to develop curriculum, see what is really a successful in the classroom before we allow out. And I just, I thought that was.
It was very evident, all the hard work you guys put into.
So much. Still working on Kate's science, so you'll see me again. And I, you know what, that night though was so exciting because it was fun to see what opportunities we had for students and, um, some of our own students, right? So I'm excited.
Absolutely. We've all been presented with a binder full of information. We're going to sit on this and we'll vote on this next conference. Does anybody else have any questions for Carrie regarding her curriculum?
You know where I'm at, if you do.
Thank you very much. Move on to Mr. Larry Hank, the Director of IT.
Hang on, it's coming. Okay. Uh, thank you for listening to me today and taking the time. Um, I want to walk through with you what we went through this year on expanding your network or the potential to do so. Uh, in, uh, let's see, on December twenty second, we posted an RFP, uh, completely open to any potential bidders, meaning we did not require an RSVP to attend. With that, sometimes you have questions of who's going to show up and that's okay. We were willing for any and all. Uh, the actual, um, walkthrough that we had scheduled for January thirtieth. If you'll look at the map that we have here above, this is our grounds. Uh, we walked most of these grounds on a muddy January thirtieth day. That is not fun, but we have things. Ms. Smith also, she was there to help get us into the locations. Um, two bidders did attend for the third call about five minutes prior to bill, which was ten AM. And they had a misconception of time zones, which I don't quite understand. And they wondered if they could come an hour late. I, I had to deny them because I wanted to. Not only do I make sure I keep this fair, just in a neutral public domain. Keep in mind that I'm filing this set of RFP under a federal guideline. We need to follow those regulations as well as our own Michigan. Uh, so of the two companies, our due date was February sixteen for the big response. Of the two companies, we had one at approximately ninety-eight thousand dollars, that was AMCOM Telecommunication. The other was, uh, approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that was Solutions. Both of these companies met our defined RFP requirements. Turnkey was above and beyond. That is obviously fine, uh, but it was unnecessary. We didn't see the necessity in spending your extra money as well as basically what they allowed us to do was to put, uh, to use more bandwidth than I don't or CS ever use it. And where, to give you an idea of where I'm getting my guidelines of this bandwidth utilization. So I based it off of what we're already using in the schools now of the fiber three quarter, right? I didn't exceed that because we've not even met what that's at. I couldn't even assess it, an extra forty thousand dollars. So at that point, I, uh, checked on references for AMCOM. Were good references, zero bad references. Um, that then turns it over to the E-rate discounts. So I hear our district E-rate, uh, discounts come through three-year use warranty. It's a bracketing system. Uh, we qualify for a sixty percent discount or reimbursement depending on filing your project. So that means if we go with the ninety-eight thousand, we're already sixty percent off of that project. This year, we had Struck a Bloke, whoa, did I say that? We had a lucky streak. Uh, there was an additional grant, uh, ten percent additional, ten percent Michigan state. It all just adds up. It's not like a sale at Target. This is all adding up sixty plus. This is an eighty percent off the entire project should we decide to go forward. Um, so what does this project do? If you look at the. Letters A, B, C, D, and E, these are the locations that we want to add network infrastructure to. A is the recently acquired church. B is a storage mall over near the soccer. C is the soccer field, baseball and softball. There's many reasons why, uh, these locations are important to us. Number one, safety and security. If we add these locations, we'll be able to add phones, we'll be able to add security cameras. Those, you know, are pretty important, obviously. What in addition we can do, A, we're still going to be moving towards academic there. None of that one. If there's a timeline or a, the off-distance horizon of what that's about. This allows us to put anything and everything that we're offering in all of our schools as far as all of those concrete. The rest of these, we can do similar to what we're already doing with the football. I didn't have all we can hear, we had my. We can do things like streaming the games, um, offering, wait for the teams to see what scores are going on in other districts. So that's fine. So just to see other internet resources. Okay, uh, with all of that, final thing I would like to say. Potential. I don't foresee that. Um, I don't believe this district has been denied in the past. Typically, the denial, uh, isn't that, um, more related to, you didn't file the paperwork correctly. Um, so we know we're okay. That we all just forward here and E-rate organization, or the general timeline that we're estimating for E-rates to approve these projects. June, again, mind we're getting a federal document here, those things. COVID obviously did throw a number into that as well, but they're starting to get that. So with all that said, are there any questions?
So one at a hundred and forty thousand?
Correct.
By the eighty percent off that?
Correct.
So there's only about eight thousand dollars difference. So for the long-term effect of this call, would it be better to, to spend a thousand to have that deep up?
Or how hard is it?
Yeah, like.
That's a fair question, both, I'm sorry, both. Um, I still want to go back, I don't believe, sorry, because we still have anywhere near what our current. So what's happening, when I say they're exceeding, what they're doing is adding literal physical lines, five lines, doing more. So to answer your question, to add more later, yes, that'd be a big, a big cost. What's happening now is we already have in each school. Uh, network distribution clause. We're only using two right now. We're getting a ten gigabit bandwidth. But Nick here, but that's a lot, we're doing very well. We still have an additional four line that we can want with today's standard technology. That'd be forty gig. So what I asked him to do again is six here, that would be as well. Whereas the Edersford company, he opted for twelve. So yes, the bandwidth would be substantially more. Um, yes, with the same point as for us to add it later. I just don't see, I think, if I had to make a wild guess right now, I would say this would be, meaning that I agree that would be thirty plus.
From the first one, from, from what you're suggesting.
If we, if we went, if we max, we would not max out five hundred and forty dollars for head. I really don't see this. If we, a project that we did in twenty fifteen, we're thinking of two lines where we're right now, we have not even gotten to twelve. These issues, even meeting with that. I see your point, I agree with you as far as it would be.
Yeah, I just, let's say that we put a CTE center. We built one, counties are going to, okay, utilize it. On a broadcasting piece to, right? Would that, if you did something like that, would that much weight on our current system? Would this system allow us to do something?
Okay, well, yeah, that's a, that's a different one. Um, I did in fact, in like putting a county. So under that, yeah, assuming fairness.
You know, we've got to do property or, you know, who knows? I'm just saying. Technology evolves and everything, we can be at the forefront. And if we have capacity where other people don't, it might be a favorable position for only $8,000. That's, that's kind of one thing.
Sure. So, um, think about it in this regard. If it's one of the, the locations that you're putting your mindset of potentially add other resources outside of the public schools. And none of this matters because that would be an entirely new project. And it wouldn't, it would still be a huge cost to.
Cause these are physical lines. So the building would have to be where those physical lines ended in fact.
Right.
Tie in.
In fact, if you brought that up, I want to clarify some of the ones with three. I see intermediate middle school. I listed the potential sources of the bidders to use resource from to go to the 80s location. But I also told them, yeah, that middle school is our hub for the air network, meaning it's preferable for us to run physical lines to this location versus these two. But while it would be cheaper, for instance, to run a line from A1 to distance. You also have to factor in, in order to segment the network through configuration. Electronics that are more cost than just putting it in the. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, is there a motion of a fiber networking? Are there any other questions or discussion regarding that? Also be a roll call vote. So Tony.
Yeah.
Seven.
Yes.
Natalie.
Yes.
Myself. Justin.
Yes.
And Tammy.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, moving on to the superintendent's report.
I'm not sure how many of you were able to see Beauty and the Beast this last week. But my daughter, so my attendance Monday performance and having been to many performances, you know, from Toronto to Detroit. Our student did a phenomenal job and we're just as good, if not better than those performances we've seen. So a big thank you to Jennifer Wood, who's actually here tonight. Kyle and Dylan and Jennifer and Juba, they all put so much work into this. Um, and then all of the students, they were absolutely phenomenal. So hopefully you guys got to, got to see that, but big kudos to them. Um, also I want to thank Chris and April out of our transportation department. Uh, they are some of the reasons we have been able to really, really are the reason why we've been able to keep our transportation running. We have these last couple of months and other districts who I think didn't have such awesome dedicated staff on administration there. We would have been looking at virtual days or closing school. Um, both Chris and April have been driving a lot on top of their job. So just a big thank you to them, um, and keeping everything running as close to normal as we can. So hopefully knock wood, we're for the rest of the year. But you know of anybody who wants to be bus driver? We are, you see the bus parked out there. We are looking to, to hire. Um, also coming up are, this will be while we're on spring break. So I want to acknowledge our principals. Principal April Thursday 5th. So, um, Mr. Dandren, Mr. Sebra, and then also Mr. Buddha, who wears multiple hats as well. A big thank you for all that they do. They do spring break. Yeah, so you get, you get the week off for. Along with that, during that week also falls paraprofessional day on April 3rd. So for all of our really hardworking aides who keep our kids safe on the playground, who help out in all of the buildings, who help with particular students. That is a really hard and often thankless job. Um, so just want to give them a big shout out as well too, since we won't be here to, um, you know, the pat on the back for all that they do. Um, I know there has been a lot of questions and concerns, I think, regarding Indiana border regarding our first move back from our spring break, April 8th, which is also a solar eclipse. We will be in session. So Michigan school district's a little bit different than Indiana school district. All the superintendents across the state, um, that I've talked to, even those closer to the total, the line of totality around Detroit are, are going to be in session. But to make sure that our students can view that safely because we will have some at the secondary level dismissing or then being at home. And then for our younger students who, this is such a great learning opportunity for all of our, um, students who are interested in science. We will, thanks to the PTO, um, who we were able to collaborate with, we will have solar eclipse classes for all of our students and staff to be able to safely view the solar eclipse. So we are excited about just the really cool science opportunity that we have, um, being this close. So according to the little NASA calculator, we are about 97% of total coverage for the eclipse. So a lot of the Indiana districts really were closing because of the traffic that we expected heading down to Indy. That they were worried about being able to get buses around safely or if you didn't have emergency personnel. Um, so since we're, since we're in Michigan, we are going to be in session and use it as a, a learning opportunity. Um, also want to bring up the bond, the zero mill bomb proposal. So we have been, um, going around and as part of the strategic planning, planning process where we've been getting a bunch of stakeholders for that. We've also been sharing about the zero mill over the current levy bomb proposal. We have had some calls and questions up here of some voters, you know, wondering if zero mill is too good to be true because it sounds a lot like one of those credit card deals where it's zero percent upfront. But then if you don't pay it, it goes up at the end. And what we've let, um, all those people know is that it's not too good to be true, but we're not asking for nothing. We are asking voters to consider to pay the same 2.8 mil taxes that they have been paying. But we are asking them to continue to pay for another 20 to 21 years shorter if interest rates are ever better again and we can refinance that debt. Um, but the bond focuses on safety, security and infrastructure and all of the bond language, which is what we have to follow. We can't put the bond money at the words of passwords, anything other than what's listed in the bomb proposal is on our website. Um, if people need paper copies, we've said to come up to the cabinet building and we will get them as many as possible. I had a really good discussion with that and the strategic plan with the historical society last week, which was really cool. Talked to a senior class and we talked about registering to vote because we had a lot of 18 year olds who weren't registered yet. Registering to vote, whether or not it's for, um, you know, the bomb proposal, what a presidential election can have, just that's a civic duty to do. So along with that, it's been really neat with the strategic plan going around and meeting with the different political groups. I visited Lions Club, we met with a couple of parents and community groups over the last couple of weeks. Uh, it was really fun to go into, um, the 12th grade classroom. Jennifer Jones had me into her classroom. Um, eighth grade Erin Suchek had me come in and meet with her class as well. Um, I will be going into Paul Littens. We have a, um, scheduling conflict last week, so that will be coming up in today. Since Brian is here, uh, speaking with ALC students, this group of ALC students gave some amazing input, uh, today. And we're really open and honest, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. So we're moving along in that process. We even had a volunteer from the ALC to be our strategic planning executive team. I'm so excited to have that student voice continue as well. So we have a few more opportunities left that I will be meeting over spring break, strategic activity. Along with, we have one more district group that we will be doing on that Wednesday as well. Um, so that's where we're at with that. And last but not least, just a little update for safety, which is going to go along with our, um, proposal. We've got some additional grant funds that Gail was referencing earlier as well to, uh, for safety. So we're going to be able to prekey some additional doors this summer, along with upgrade all of the phones to be 911 compliant all this summer. And then moving forward into next year, uh, all of our buildings now have threat assessment teams are trained using the C-State model. Which is good to have and meets in our board policy for threat assessment. And then we also now have five district, um, alisters, including, um, off of our SRA, Mike Dandren, James Sebra, Laura Blacklock and Ashley Stein. So they will be working with all staff when we head back to school, um, so that all of our buildings have also added things as well too. We're moving forward on meeting our goals for, for safety as well.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to subcommittee reports. Um, did you guys have anything to add for the finance background? Yeah, Chris, Gail covered everything there. Carrie covered everything with the. Moving on to comments from the audience. Have any comments? You can come up and speak. You have, you have three minutes to speak. Please start. You start by, um, saying your name and your.
Hi, I'm Captain Schaefer and my address, I've never told to this many strangers. Just 7175 Pine Lake Street.
Can I? So this is an opportunity for you to talk to us, but we will not answer just.
Oh yeah, I know. Okay. I know that part. I've had enough of the minutes. Um, I just want to say that this week, uh, we talked our daughter for primary registration and we, that went great. And we really thank the administrator that we met there. Um, I'm happy to see the curriculum update is up for vote. Thank you so much for all the work, for everybody that did that here and the subcommittee. And I really want to encourage you to vote yes for that. It's time. I think a lot of good work has done, been done and I think it'll bring us up to the.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the audience? Carrie, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support. All in favor, please say aye.
Oh, I should say we have decided to cancel our meeting that is typically scheduled for the Monday when we have a scheduled session on, on April 8th. So that is officially canceled. He's in school.
No worries.
Yeah.